If everyone take a seat, we're gonna start in just a few moments. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Would you please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Seig. Alderman Malumbway.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Hallman.
Here.
Alderman Fruin.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and start with recognitions and appointments. We'll start with proclaiming July 2016 as Parks and Recreation Month. Jay, are you here? Come on down. I don't know if the price is right, but we've got something for you. Everybody, yeah. Eric and Company, yeah. Actually, you can come on behind us, so we need to have some decent photo ops. And I'm sure the council's not camera shy either, so... Thanks. How you doin'? Please come on up, so we can... So we can get great photos? Goodness, Parks and Rec staff in action. You're gonna catch us all. Thanks. Awesome. Can you start and read this? Jay, congratulations. As usual, for those in the audience who haven't been here before, we have lots of whereases in any proclamation. Wouldn't be a proclamation with lots of whereases. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Bloomington, Illinois, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and a region, and whereas Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas Parks and Recreation Programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas Parks and Recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas Parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air, excuse me, the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and provide habitat for wildlife, wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas Bloomington, Illinois recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation Resources, therefore I, Mayor Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of July to be Parks and Recreation Month. Thank you, Jay. I just wanna add an additional whereas. Parks and Recreation Programs make your breakfast with negative calories, too, with all these things. Thank you, Jay. Awesome. Congratulations. And thank you to all the staff. Next, moving right along, we have a recognition of Brittany Mitchell to the Property Maintenance Review Board. Brittany, good to see you, Brittany. Thank you. Brittany is a graduate of Bloomington 101 and a distinguished participant, and we're very happy to have you involved. Thank you so much, Brittany. Appreciate this. In addition, we have the introduction of Melissa, the Honorable Assistant to the City Manager, and am I gonna turn it over? Who am I turning it over to, Brian? Okay.
Good evening. I just wanted to take this opportunity just to let you all know a little bit more about me. I was born and raised in Peoria, Illinois. I attended Bradley University, where I graduated with a Bachelor of Science degree. After graduating, I spent a couple years working in the financial services industry. After that, I took a position with the City of Peoria, where I have worked for the last 15 years, working in a variety of departments, planning and growth management, workforce development, and most recently as a project coordinator in the Community Development Department. During that time, I also obtained my Master's of Business Administration degree, and I just wanna say I'm very excited to be here and to work with the wonderful staff here at the City of Bloomington, and I'm very excited to become a resident and part of the Bloomington, Illinois, community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Really great to see you. Just wanna say, your office used to be more of a, it was a community utilization site, and many of us have just accidentally sort of just burst into your office, and I keep looking for the clock that used to be there, but anyway, we will begin to respect boundaries and get on with it. Fair enough. Thank you so much. Appreciate that, Melissa. Okay, at this point, we're gonna move on to public comment, and just want to clarify for everyone, if you want actual direct answers, you wanna engage in dialogue with either myself, staff, or your fellow citizens, we have right over there on Friday before regular Monday City Council meetings, a mayoral open house, 4:30 to 5:30. You don't have to make an appointment, you can just come by. Sometimes we can get answers immediately, we can sometimes solve problems in real time. Any time that you can stop by. The public comment time is really more of an open mic. You have up to three minutes, and I'm gonna go ahead and call people in terms of, in threes, so we have enough time for everyone this evening to speak. First of all, Joe Denman, and then Cecilia Tuchard, and Scott Steimerling. Those are the first three. Joe, are you here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor, Alderman. Three minutes is all I have. Is that correct? Okay, well, good evening.
They have a timer.
My name's Joe Denman, I'm a lifelong citizen of Bloomington, Illinois. I was born here 60 years ago. If you've been following the papers lately, there's been some discussions about a seedy side of Bloomington back 60 years ago, where we had houses of ill repute, prostitution was rampant, just three blocks from where I'm standing, right down where Woodhill Towers is standing today. That's been gone now for the better part of 60 years. However, it's creeped back into our community. And Mr. Mayor, you will recall I sent you an email, trying to find a way to help some young ladies, and I wanna make sure I paint the picture correctly for them. That'll be my only reading here. Okay. Now, maybe I won't. This is my first time in front of the city council, so I'm a little nervous, so I apologize for that. But on the southeast corner of Morrissey Drive and Hamilton Road is a soybean field. I was driving to work one day to my office at 1712 Hamilton, Suite A, and I look over in the field, and there's two Asian women on their knees picking soybeans that were left over from the harvesting process. I assumed that they're doing that for consumption, so I called, or actually, I wrote you, no, I take that back. I called the police department and said, "I think there's some sex trafficking going on here. These women are in this building all the time. They have no car, they have no way to leave the building other than walking, but they're always there. They live there, they sleep there, they eat there. They're living there." Time goes on. We progress. One day, I'm opening up the back garage store to help a customer unload a truck, and low and behold, there is another Asian woman in the backyard foraging for food in the form of dandelions. I went up to her, and I said, "What are you doing? Can I help you in any way here?" And I said, "What are you gonna do with these?" And she looked at me, and she says, "For to eat." That was her English. At that point, I thought, you know what, it's the 21st century, we don't eat dandelions to survive. That's just not right. So, I contacted the mayor and said, "Hey, we gotta do something here, something's going on." Since that time, the building has been closed down because of a public safety issue, not because of alleged prostitution or alleged sex trafficking. However, on a bigger story, there are six places in Bloomington that are basically Asian massage parlors where you go for something other than a legitimate massage. They're hours or till 10 o'clock at night, they're not offering skin exfoliation or things like that that women go to. The customers that walk into these places are men. I'll see them come into the shop next to me, they'll park across the street at Hunneman Lumber, they'll park over at the forklift place, and they'll walk into this building.
I'm sorry, you have to wrap up, sir. It ends up...
I implore you to please take an interest in this. I would love to give you more information, so you can see for yourselves what is going on there, and you'll come to the conclusion that it is not a legitimate massage parlor. You will see that our community has once again gone backwards, and we have houses of ill repute right here in our fine city. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks. Okay. Next, we go to Cecilia Tuchard, and then Scott Steimerling and Jeff Smith. Cecilia? Okay, she's not here. Scott Steimerling, and then Jeff Smith and Elton Franklin. Scott?
I'm Scott Steimerling. I'm at 111 Parkview Drive. My concern is regarding the storm drains that we've been talking about a number of years. I would like for the people, the storm that we had the other night, had, I had a bunch of street washed down the street, plugged up the storm drains, and there were about four or five big hunks of asphalt that washed away. You know, I don't know how much more this you can handle and still have streets, you know, in decent condition. I have a neighbor that was right across from me that basically lives, and basically the storm drain was plugged. I don't want a bunch of water in my house, and I wish the city would do something. They asphalted those drains in the yard into the road about 10 years ago. They said they'd be out in the spring and fix it, and I'm still waiting. You know, we say the streets in this town are, when you come into Bloomington, you say, "Welcome to Bloomington, home of the potholes." You know, I hit a pothole on a city street, did almost $900 worth of damage to my car. Not once did anybody say, "I guess we were wrong." And I guess, you know, that's basically what I've got to say. I mean, you know, even the neighbors have said how bad the roads are. You know, I wouldn't be proud of that, I really wouldn't. This is the 21st century. We're not living back in the Dark Ages. And this is the City of Bloomington, not Illinois Westland. Thank you.
Okay. We have Jeff Smith, Elton Franklin, and then Mark Sperry.
Good afternoon. I'm Jeff Smith, 4/9. I wanted to, you know, we're running some things. We have a 100% IPI score. You guys replace these, and when Benny works, and Dan and Hill send a hand grant, I think that's great work right here. Anyway, good day, but also, I'm glad that a hotel is not gonna be done this time, we need to rethink the whole thing. Regarding Boston, I see, in looking at the flash report, lost some money. I have a lot to go, but I didn't know about it ahead of time, so. I did have some economists, too. I say that they have the not flash reports out there, but if you look at the contract here, they're still re-purposed, they're not listed on the website, I'd like to see those. Also, I did some request in the past, given the fact that the computers are at the calcium, can I actually redo my forward request? Another thing, too, is regarding the 7B, we lost 28,000, 2800 droughts here, and we listed one person every five minutes from Illinois. Now, Terry, I understand in looking through 7B that you need to sometimes eat out. My question is, for the kind of expenses that occur in the city, does that actually bring jobs back in the city? So, something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Elton Franklin, Mark Sperry, and Patricia Martin.
My name is Elton Franklin, I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington, Illinois. There's never any doors of anything to speak about. I see we're bypassing the bidding process yet again, and I'm just kinda curious with regards to all the final plats that are being done, and there's only one that speaks to passing, posting a required bond, paying the required tap-on fees, and approval of construction plans, and it may be something as simple as, once we put it in there, we don't need to put it in there again, but it does say on each one, recommend the ordinance be approved for the final plat. I just, I really have issues where we go outside the process. We have certain times where it makes sense not to, not to set out a bid, because we have the Illinois Municipal Cooperative, whatever you wanna call it, where we do get finance, I mean, prices that are much better because we move as a collective. There's other times where there's no explanation, and yet they waive the formal bidding process and just say, "Well, we're just gonna go ahead and buy this." There's too many times where we do things like that, and I just wonder how much money we're wasting there. And to that point, we come to something that just absolutely stuns me, and that is, now we are bringing on an assistant to the city manager. Now, we already have an assistant city manager, so I'm still, I'm somewhat puzzled as to what we need an assistant to the city manager for as well. We have a communications director, we're still, it seems like we're hiring, but it seems like we're not really taking a look at the full cost and looking at what we're getting in return. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me that city manager, what's left for him to do? We've got somebody that takes care of the finances, we've got all the rest of the department heads to take care of all the rest of that stuff, and I just don't see that we're getting any value having a city manager. I think he's pretty much assistant to, assistant to himself out of a job, because these, he's got all these people, all these little snuffies that are taking care of the grunt work, the stuff that really, in my mind, the city manager should be taking care of. To that point, I still haven't heard anything. I keep on hearing, well, excuse me, I've heard a lot. I haven't seen anything being done with regards to any look at cutting the spending. We automatically bring up the FUD of, "Yeah, we're gonna have to do away with some of the first responders if we cut the budget anymore," but there's a whole lot of fat that could be cut elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. We usually don't respond, but Elton, if you wanna talk to me afterwards, I'm happy to give you information from ICMA on the city manager form of government. At this point, Mark Sperry, and then Patricia Martin.
Mark Sperry. I live at 1903 Gailey Lane, Tipton subdivision. Lived in Bloomington for 58 years, all my life. You all have a PowerPoint in front of you, and I'm here to talk about your bulk and brush program. I don't think the program is working as you guys have intended for it to come out and work, and if you take a look at some of these slides that I've gone around to different homeowners and taken pictures of their residents, the policy says you're not supposed to put bulk or brush waste until 2:00 PM the day before pickup, and that's not happening. Nor is it not happening, it's not being enforced as well. So if you take a look at those pictures, you'll see where people are putting stuff out the day of regular pickup, maybe they're putting it out the day of pickup, but they're putting the wrong item, because on a recycle day, you pick, that's when you pick up the bulk waste, but they're putting that out when it's non-recyclable day. And it's just not happening as intended. So, if you look at all these different types of pictures, I wanna call the one to you where the gentleman puts out his glass, his grass clippings. You're not supposed to put grass out there, yet he's piling grass out there every week, and then if you look at the picture after that, which would be slide number eight, you see that material all washing down the street. So, I wanna not only come here with a problem, but with a solution. So I wanna take a little bit of time and just talk to you about a solution. And that is, you've established the guidelines, and that is 2:00 PM the day prior to. It's not being enforced by anybody. So, I live under a concept of what's not measured is not managed. So if I were to ask you, what percent of homeowners are abiding by the policy that you put in place, I'd be surprised if anybody could tell me that. So it's not being managed. So, here are four ideas. There's a lot of other ideas if you open it up to other people, but these are just my ideas. First one is, why don't you have the garbage driver track every week who's got bulk waste and the trimmings out on the sidewalk or out on the curb on days when it's not supposed to be? Because it's only supposed to be there 2:00 PM prior to the day of pickup of recyclable. Now you've got data, so you can start managing this program. Then, come back to those residents and fine them. Put a hefty fine on it. Make it worth its time. And if that doesn't work, maybe take the entire program and subcontract it to somebody else. Because the city's responsibility is to protect the citizens, provide services, but maybe somebody else should manage it. Then on the flip side of it is...
I'm gonna need you to wrap up. If you have more to tell us, you can email us.
Okay.
Especially if you've got all four points and you wanna email it to us.
You've got them right there in that PowerPoint.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last, but not least, Patricia Martin.
Good evening. Thank you. I wanna thank all of you again for expressing your concern about elder abuse to this most attractive and meaningful proclamation, which puts us in line with the governor of our state as well as the president of our country. And it also has the most meaning to me because it was made in the community that I actually live in. So, thank you. And this is the proclamation. Thanks a lot. Okay. The proclamation is, of course, significant, but equally important is the necessity of putting it into effect, as well as monitoring our community institutions and establishing and amending laws that affect them. I'm also pleased and relieved with what I'm experiencing at both the city and county meetings, as well as at our Capitol in Springfield, and of course, nationally. I'm also very happy about the reception of the project dealing with children's books. I talked about the project both here and at the county board meeting last week, and board member Jim Soldner had his young grandson with him at the county meeting, which gave the talk a broader and even entertaining perspective, because I showed pictures from one of the books. For such books, concern is initial means of educating young people about the complexities that can and will occur in their lives, and do so in a compassionate manner. We are fortunate that we have not only artists and writers that are able to do this, but also publishers, bookstores, and library systems to present them to the public. And again, I want to thank the Bloomington Library for showing their support, as you have too. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Patricia. We're gonna move right along to the consent agenda, and before we begin, I actually do have, usually not me, but I have one item that we're gonna pull from the consent agenda, and that's Item 7M, as in mother, and we will bring this back probably in our next council meeting. Are there other items that we would like to have pulled? Any of the council members would like to have pulled for separate discussion or action from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of Item 7M?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt, second by Alderwoman Hallman. Alderman Fruin?
Thank you, Mayor. With regard to the consent and regular agenda, I have not received any monies or financial benefits from any of the individuals or organizations referenced in these specific agenda items. Thank you.
Okay. All right. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and start. An eye vote is for the consent, to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of Item 7M. The motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And we move right along to the regular agenda, Item 8A, and consideration of approving a resolution naming the City of Bloomington as a cosponsor to the 2016 Bloomington Criterion, which shall be the 2016 Illinois Criterion State Championship. And we're gonna go ahead, is there a motion to start this discussion out, or did you want to say anything? Is there a motion to begin this?
I will make a motion that we approve this as presented to us.
Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt, second by Alderwoman Hallman. I thought you were doing, oh, Alderwoman Burgess, excuse me, okay. And discussion. Okay? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say thank you to Karen Schmidt for working very hard on making this happen. I know you've had a lot of hours of meetings with the Criterion sponsors on how to make this a bigger and better event, and I think we're all looking forward to it.
Thank you. We do have Kevin Deener, and Matt Hawkins, and Julie Coop from our Planning Committee in the audience, if there are questions about what we're doing. This is a precursor to an ordinance that I know Steve Rasmussen has been working on that would formalize the city as a cosponsor for, what does that mean to be a city-sponsored or cosponsored event? So this is a, I think it's encapsulated in this, but it's happening before the ordinance is quite ready for a final vote.
Okay. Go ahead. Actually, we'd have to suspend the rules, but Alderman Fruin, and then we'll see if we can suspend the rules, Elton, if you have a question.
I think he was asking for the, what a Criterion is, so Karen, you wanna start that?
Is that what you were asking? Elton, can I?
You're asking what a Criterion is?
Fair enough. Good.
Kevin, how would you like to describe a Criterion to us?
A Criterion is a bike race?
Could you stand up?
Yes, stand up. Please come to the...
Sorry, sorry, Kevin.
So, a Criterion is a bike race in which it is somewhere between, it's about a mile long is the course, and you race a number of laps based on how experienced of a rider you are, and it's kind of, it's a very neat community event, 'cause it gets a lot of people out there to hang out in the downtown area and then watch people have fun riding their bikes. But it's very similar to like, almost a NASCAR race, if you will, with turns and laps and...
This is the state championship, designated state championship?
It is the designated state championship for 2016 and 17.
Right, and there's a purse that comes with it?
That's correct. So the people that are racing do have the opportunity to earn money based on how they place in the race.
Alderman Black, and then Fruin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work on this. I guess I want to make, be clear here, I'm looking at the backup materials, and it noted that this event's going to be in conjunction with the BCPA Beer Fest. My memory might be a little hazy, but I thought that already had happened.
It should say Brugela.
Brugela, okay.
At the same time as Brugela is going on.
And Brugela, I think, is, that's at the corn crib.
At the corn crib. So Brugela will be Friday and Saturday. This is Saturday only.
Okay.
Saturday afternoon.
Okay. Great.
And I have a feeling, I'm told that bicycle racers enjoy craft beer and will probably be heading north.
I've heard those rumors as well, so.
Ice cream.
Have to have an empirical assessment of this.
I'll investigate.
Alderman Frueen.
I should want to add my support to this, and I would just mention that whether it's this or other activities, parades, what have you, I know a couple of years ago, there was some discussion about the cost involved, overtime, salaries, et cetera. But I think really the city of Bloomington needs these things. And I don't know if there's much detail in here about what this is going to cost the city, and what is city labor and what is volunteer labor. I don't know that I necessarily need to get into that tonight because I think sometimes the benefits of it far outweigh what that cost might be. So I don't see anybody trying to resurrect that discussion about the cost of community events, but I just think things like this are wonderful for our community. Thank you.
Alderman Lauer.
Just in light of current events and the things that are, the new procedures that our first responders are attempting to respond to and change, I would like to, I certainly want to support this, but I also want to, you know, bring up a little flag of caution. I think we need a lot more volunteerism. We need a lot of eyes on the streets during this and the Brugela event as well. I really would like to see this continue. I'd hate to have, just one, one little hiccup can ruin the whole thing. And I know you've put a lot of work into this, and I want to support it. I think it's important for us to do things like this, but on the other hand, a word of caution. So thanks.
I think events like this don't happen without a really strong set of volunteers. We have a volunteer coordinator who'll be bringing in service organizations as well as individuals to make sure that we've got that covered. I agree, Kevin. There's, we want to be vigilant.
Okay. Thanks. Okay? Anything else? Okay. Thank you so much. If everyone will go ahead and vote, there's a motion on the floor. A motion, obviously, "I" is to approve the motion as presented. The motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We'll move right along to item 8B, consideration of ordinance approving a membership in the Intergovernmental Personnel Benefit Cooperative, IPBC, and the contract and bylaws. And I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Nicole Albertson, who's going to give us a re-presentation and then we'll begin a council discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Well, good evening. Thank you for letting us present to you this evening. We are going to talk to you about a potential membership in the Intergovernmental Personnel Benefit Cooperative. With me also this evening is Lori Woolrep, Payroll Benefits Manager. We have got Dave Cook from IBC, IBPC, and we've got Greg Olivan from Gallagher. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Lori has done the lion's share of the work on this, so I'm basically just sharing information that she's brought forward. So we received a goal back in the fall of 2015 to really look at ways that we can reduce our costs associated with health insurance. So staff has really been diligent the last nine months on finding ways that we can do this. We plan to take a three-pronged approach to this. One of the ideas is we are going to look at implementing a new plan design to help in sharing and saving on those costs. We will be looking at a dependent eligibility verification audit, probably rolling that out in the next couple of months to help reduce the cost. And then what we're here to talk to you about tonight is potential membership in the IBPC. So three-pronged approach to try to get at the goal of saving some, some costs related to health insurance. So you may recall in the spring, Dave Cook and Greg Olivan presented to you details on what the, what membership looks like in the IBPC. And so we wanted to take a moment to refresh you on those details. Founded in 1979, so they've been around quite a few years, proven track record on success. It does allow municipal groups to band together for the purposes of insurance, and they are currently up to 103 members. I do want to point out, it does say municipalities, but 103 members, of which the primary source of that is, is municipalities. They do have a couple of counties, a few other agencies, but they range in location everywhere from northern Illinois down to Metro St. Louis. It does, the co-op offers self-insured PPO, HMO dental programs, gives member access to the life AD&amp;D. But I wanted to take a minute and outline for you the three tiers of the unique pooling of this risk. So the city is responsible, or members are responsible, for any individual health insurance claims up to $35,000. We then move on to tier two, where the risk pool shares in those costs between 35 and 125, and then anything over 125 is reinsured. So that is important to know that that's how the pool works. As with anything, we wanted to take the time to get as much information as we could to provide you, to make an informed decision. Again, staff spent a lot of time, a lot of due diligence, seeking out information. We talked to several current members, former members, other individuals that are familiar with the IBPC. And so we want to show you that we are comfortable and we clearly think that the benefits outweigh the risks of membership with IBPC. So we'll walk through a few of these. First and foremost, estimated five-year cost savings of 8.9 million. That's really hard to ignore, especially given the fact that we reset the goal to find ways to reduce our health insurance costs. You do have in your handout a table that outlines the details of that for you. Minimal disruption to employees, that's important to note. So the primary disruption to employees will be nothing more than new ID cards. We are staying with Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is our current PPO provider. I do need to mention, though, that our HMO provider is with Health Alliance that will switch to Blue Cross Blue Shield under this plan, under this pool. The benefit of spreading the risks, so it basically takes the city out of the risk business. It does also allow us the autonomy to set our own plan design, so that's important as well. We have the flexibility to set our own, our own copays, our own deductibles, just as we do today. Increased purchasing power, it enhances our budgeting and our stability of premiums from year to year, so that enhances our ability to plan for those. It provides us access to information and data that we may not have today, so that is definitely a benefit. And it also gives us access to a network of peers that we may not necessarily have access to today. So 103 city managers, 103 HR directors, 103 finance directors. So that's a piece that we're really excited about, is being able to share ideas and really find ways to combat that trend of increasing health insurance costs. On the risk side, and I'm very careful to call it risks because I really think these are just considerations that you need to think about to make a fully informed decision, these were vetted by our legal team with Sorling Northrip. And so Emily Reed Peterson is a name you've probably heard before. She pointed these risks out to us, and so we wanted to make sure to address them with you this evening. One is supplemental payments. And so right now, the IBPC sets the premium rates for their members, taking into consideration trend analysis, claims cost, administration fees, those are all included in those premium rates. There is a slight chance that those funds would not be sufficient to cover the cost. If that happened, then the members of the IBPC pool would share in the cost of bringing those funds up to a sufficient level. I am here to tell you everything that we've looked at and everything that we hear that has never happened in the history of IBPC, but it is something to consider. Clarifying the investment policy, again, another consideration to think about when vetting the contract and the policies and procedures with IBPC. The investment policy does not necessarily read the way that the process actually works. We are 100% confident that it is fully within compliance, no concerns there, under the direction of the Board of Directors. We have, they have investment consultants come in that really oversee that policy. The thing that we would ask if we do become members is for the Board to look at maybe rewriting the verbiage there so it is a little bit clearer. And then the possible bias by Gallagher was pointed out and something you need to consider. As you know, the city has been with Gallagher for two years, and we work with them on our health insurance, dental, and vision. They also are the main consultant with the IBPC pool, and so we wanted to set aside any concerns that there may be, that there would be a bias there for that recommendation. So one other thing I do want to point out to you is this is a very low-risk endeavor in that, you know, worst-case scenario, we can get out at the end of each year. At the end of each year, we have the option to terminate the agreement and move on as we do today. Okay. So as I mentioned earlier, we deeply, deeply vetted this. We spoke to several people, some current members, some previous members, some individual third parties who are familiar with IBPC. I wanted to summarize some of the results with you. Probably the one that had the biggest impact for me was the number one listed up there, Mike Nugent from Nugent Consulting. If you're familiar, Mike Nugent handles our property and casualty risk management for the city, so he's very familiar with the city. He's also very familiar with the IBPC. He has other clients that are in the pool. And very positive comments from Mike. He basically stated he hears very positive things about the IBPC and believes that, believes it is a good fit for the city. Patrick Seeger, Director of HR with Village of Hoffman Estates, strong financial model, very happy financially, rate increases have been very stable, very strong customer service levels, strong emphasis on wellness, dynamic professionals on the executive board. Dane Bragg, City Manager, Village of Buffalo Grove, you can read through that, all very positive remarks. Jim Arnt, we did speak to, City Manager of City of Effingham, very, very new. They just decided to go with membership in July. So they're kind of experiencing some of the same things that we're experiencing at this point, but again, they felt as though it was a good fit for their city and we do as well. So this brings me to our final recommendation. You know, based on everything that we've talked about and really researched over the last six months, we feel as though membership in the IBPC is really the best move for the city. We would ask that you consider that and would like to take it back January 1st, 2017. Okay? That brings me to the end of my presentation. Happy to-
Questions of Nicole?
Answer any questions that you have. I'm probably going to rely on a couple of our experts here to-
Who are in the audience, as we've seen them. We've met them before. Alderman Frueen, we'll start with you.
Mayor, do you want a motion at this point?
I would love to have a motion.
Okay. Might give you a sigh of relief if I made a motion to approve this.
I appreciate your feedback. You have no idea. It helped us.
Moved by Alderman Frueen, second by Alderwoman Painter. Any further discussion questions? Alderman Lauer.
Just, just, just to reaffirm that if we were unhappy at some point, how long would it take us to respool and get back to what we've been doing or find another avenue to get coverage?
Well, the beauty of this is, and I do truly mean that, we are still working with the same team at Gallagher. So the folks that we've been working with the last two years are the same folks that will continue to work with us. And so I feel very comfortable that that would be a very short timeframe. I think we could probably jump right back into where we left off and move from there. So I'm very comfortable with that.
Would you want to come, please come forward.
Okay. You know, my Dave Cook will come with me. Our bylaws are in the conform with state law for intergovernmental cooperatives, so it would be a negative resolution 90 days prior to the start of a new year.
Okay.
Thanks.
Think that's pretty clear. Anything else?
A few questions for Nicole.
Please. Us can sit down.
Or not.
I think that was pretty, I think that was pretty firm, though, you know, 90 days. You know, we got it.
No, thanks, Nicole, for all your work and Lori's work. And I've already said I'm supportive of this, but a couple minutes, a couple questions. I appreciated the reference checks, and you've included the ones that are positive. I suspect maybe you made some reference checks that were not so positive.
I did.
We don't have to go in a lot of detail here unless you want to respond to a couple of these comments, but I think the city of Springfield might have had this association, this, and then dropped it.
I don't know how much detail you want, but I'll share what I know. I did not, was not able to find anybody currently in administration that knew quite what happened. I did speak to the member of the Insurance Committee, Mike, help me with his last name, Allwood, I believe it was.
Allwood, I think.
And he was very forthcoming about not quite understanding the administrative fee cost upfront. I think, and that was about seven years ago, so I think some changes have been made since then. I also checked it on the other side, and you know, there's two sides to every story. So even after discussing it at length with him, I still feel like it's a good fit for us.
One of the things I was very appreciative of, and I've mentioned your comments here about reference checks, and I think shortly after our discussion in May, I asked about some of these organizations. And I think we've all met, worked with Mike Nugent for quite a while, and so you've got his endorsement. He's saying that this is the, a good direction to go. One thing that we can talk about in the future, and I know the group is trying to come downstate, but there is a real absence of any municipalities, et cetera, south of I-80. So that's something to keep an eye on as to why they haven't made a better progression down there. So I think you've made it clear that we still have the freedom, the flexibility, to do our own plan design work.
Correct.
And that was a little bit confusing on the first page and the second page. I think I read somewhere here, I'm on the bottom of the first page, I'll just read two sentences here. "The Board of Directors determines the general policy the IPBC is responsible for, among other things, approving the benefit programs offered to members, hiring of staff vendors, and IPBC premium member rates." Anyway, I didn't know what all that interaction meant, but we have the freedom with plan design without approval from the group.
Correct. Yeah, they have over, if you look on page two, Jim, under flexibility, it notes that they have over 625 different plans, plan designs, so.
Talking about the vendors. So I thought-
So he's referring to the vendor selection?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And I thought, Nicole, after our May discussion, I wasn't sure, where do we stand on plan design for 2017, and is there going to be some interaction with the city council?
Right. So we have a new plan design for the health insurance, which really focuses on out-of-pocket maximums, same copays, same deductibles, nothing there is changing. We are looking at increasing the out-of-pocket maximum and increasing the ER copay. Those are the two main, main increases. We are actually looking at reducing generic prescription copays to $5, so that would be a change that will decrease costs for the employee. And then we're looking at bumping up the value of the dental plan, as well as bumping up the value of the life insurance plan. Where we're at with that is we have negotiated that item with two unions and are looking at possibly moving that into the future with, with other groups we'll talk to in 2017.
And maybe discussion for another day, because I heard you say we're going to bump up, and we're going to bump up, we're going to keep things the same. And I think there's a, either perception or reality out there, that we have one of the richest health insurance plans of any employer in the area. And, you know, our taxpayers, our residents are paying taxes for a benefit plan that's far richer than what they have themselves. So if that's perception or reality, we need to address that when we meet again and talk about plan design. And the easy comparisons, apples and apples, people talk about what's your deductible, what's your copay, what's your, and those are the things we need to educate ourselves on, educate our membership. So anyway, you've done a great job with this.
Yes.
It's one of the many steps. You talked about the other steps there, so thanks for, for helping me with some of my questions the last couple of months.
No problem. I appreciate it.
Any others? Okay. Thank you very much. Well, we do have a motion on the floor, and we're going to go ahead and vote. Obviously, an "I" vote is in favor of the motion as presented. The motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much, Nicole.
Thank you.
We're going to move right along then to item 8C. And we have Bob Yale from the Water Department. Good to see you. And we have consideration professional services agreement with Baxter and Woodman.
Good to see you as well. See if I can manage this one. All right, passed the first test, I think. Here tonight to talk about design contract, to look at deep groundwater wells here like Bloomington, like Evergreen. I'm going to- I'm going to tell the story by backing up a few years and then come back to the contract per se, so bear with me for a few minutes. I think I have 25 minutes to talk.
Uh, no, 10.
And it's going somewhere. I'm going to go back to do that-
See, the longer you talk, the more endangered this is of being not-
I've got it right in front of me, Mayor. I'm good. Nine and a half left to go. Inner water supply plan in 2010 was a compilation of years' worth of work prior to that. We have not done a tremendous amount towards that end in the infrastructure portion of that plan, which if you look at the right-hand side of that, you're going to see an infrastructure timeline with recommendations, you're going to see a management timeline with recommendations. The left-hand side of that sheet tells you expectations or performance measures. We have not moved very forward on infrastructure, but we have on management, both from water conservation. We passed a drought ordinance in 2012, 2013. We need to move forward with addressing the total amount of water and the quality of water, and specifically dealing with nitrates. You're going to see, on the right, we've circled Danvers Valley Wells for Blending. The title of the presentation was St. Peter Aquifer, so I'll deal through that in a minute. Here's your water supply planning options in graphical format, which is much more appealing to me, but you're going to see from pumping improvements to lake area wells at the lake, you're going to see a southwest well field, conservation, and drought planning. I'm going to jump back to nitrates as one of our issues. Simple on this graph, left-hand side is Lake Bloomington, right-hand side is Evergreen Lake. The red line is the regulatory limit for nitrates in the water. Had an opportunity to talk about this particular component with a number of you, something we monitor very closely. You can see that Lake Bloomington routinely goes up over 10, and Lake Evergreen is about half of that. We're currently pumping from Lake Evergreen because of the levels in Bloomington since December. Something that we should be aware of, it's something that we talk about consistently, and I want to point that out because it should alarm you a little bit, because it does, the Water Department. So we combine nitrate management with that capacity as the city grows and our ability to provide additional water. We put costs in there, we come up with recommended improvements. We talked about nitrates, you can do ion exchange. In this case, we want to see what we can blend with to reduce the cost with nitrate removal, thereby maximizing our dollars, so we come with our recommended improvements. Graph showing McLean County, up to the top left of that is the Denver's Valley Bedrock. We evaluated that as part of the inner water supply plan. It's a shallower, much shallower aquifer than the St. Peter Sandstone. You'll see St. Peter Sandstone is about 1,600 feet deep in this area. These are in the hundreds of feet. This caused some discussions and oppositions amongst people worried about us tapping into the aquifer where the private wells are. We heard that, we understand that, not necessarily completely agree that that's going to be the case, but we often hear, listen to the people, listen to the citizens, so we do, we did. So we're moving slowly. So this is actually a sign that they put up years ago, so we include that one. So we've been moving slowly, trying to find out what that solution might be. In late 2015, Illinois State Water Survey released a study, says Northern Illinois, but it comes down to Bloomington, goes to Southern Wisconsin, it's the St. Peter Sandstone. On the left graph, just notice a lot of dots. There's a lot of gray ones, there's a lot of blue ones, those all go to the St. Peter Sandstone. Not a lot in downstate Illinois. We would be the furthest south in downstate Illinois to tap water from here, but Chino and Monoc do it. There are some other concerns dealing with the components in the water than we do in our reservoirs, but it's not something that we're concerned about at this point. The State Water Survey feels it's feasible, and in fact, we already have a contract with the Illinois State Water Survey to help us through this process. It was approved in a procurement memo some number of months ago, as we waited to develop the design engineering part of this. They're going to do literature review, do some analysis, help us observe, and coordinate with our engineers, which is Baxter and Woodman being proposed tonight. They've done some literature review and the extension of what they did with the statewide study, feel it's very feasible, feel it's something we should look at and feel it will help our concerns. Where is the St. Peter Sandstone? You've probably all seen the Mohammed Aquifer and heard many conversations about that one, but this aquifer is very large. And as I flip down through a couple more slides, you'll see that it's recharged from the Illinois State, I'm sorry, from the Illinois River near Peoria. It gets very deep, it's got a lot of good head. Elgin and Aurora both blend it with surface water, which would be one of our potential Again, 1,600 feet deep, because it does vary in depth, the pressure will bring it within hundreds of feet of the surface, help us pump it out. And we can deal with, we feel we can deal with some of the components in that groundwater, blend it with the surface water, treat it, and remove them. So Baxter and Woodman, you let me tell a story for a few minutes? I'm still going good on time. So they're going to do a preliminary justification report, they're going to review what the Illinois State Water Survey has done, they're going to review literature out there, they're going to draw upon their vast history and their expertise of deep water wells up in the Chicago area, help make sure we're not overlooking something, making sure we're not spending money we don't need to spend. I realize that there's going to be hopefully reduced opposition. If anything, talk about drilling wells, it's going to bring conversation from the public. We're going to do a couple of public meetings, probably up at the lodge and somewhere else, make sure we hear the citizens, make sure we can address those. I sat with a lot of smart people and I asked the question, what happens? And it was a hypothetical, I said, what happens when we draw water from, and they just all looked at me and said, that won't happen. I said, well, we need to make sure we communicate that, we do our due diligence, and we make sure everybody's comfortable with that. So we've got that included. They'll also design permit, bid, observe, and afterwards, when we get some water out of it, they'll give us recommendations and ballpark cost estimates of phase two. I'll walk through a couple of phases here in a second, but I do want to be clear that this is design services, will lead into drilling some test wells, and then we'll come back with phases later to do the actual bringing the water to the plant and how we treat the water. So multi-stage, multi-phase approach, we'll come back iteratively and let you guys know where we are, get approval as we move forward. Just a visual on the right showing the difference of where most of the shallower wells are at the top, and you can see how deep the St. Pete is. But phase one, I'll call it phase one A is our design and permitting, our public outreach one A, which we'll come back for approval after we do the bidding process, which is actually drilling the wells, determining what we have. Excuse me. Where are we going to put the wells? Can't tell you exactly, but I can tell you that it's a good possibility, we can put a couple of them at least, on city property at Lake Bloomington and Lake Evergreen. We maximize the land we already own, we use the pipelines we already have, we don't have to necessarily deal with getting across people's property and those issues that come with that. Phase two, that's where we can analyze it, design what our improvements are, and put that into the treatment train per se. So again, we're going to come back with multiple phases. So we say yes to deep drilling. That was not posted on the telephone poll, we added that, of course. Again, we think it'll minimize or reduce public opposition, give us the ability to address the quantity as well as the quality. And with that, my timer disappeared, but I'm presuming I'm under.
I think that's a safe assumption. At this point, questions? Alderwoman Schmidt.
I don't have a question, but Mr. Yao, you're remarkably low-key about something that has been on our plate for a very long time, so congratulations. This is just great to see. This is really exciting. It's, we've talked and talked and talked, now we're doing.
Staff is excited that I came here tonight to speak to you all. It's not for a lack of effort, but as most of you probably know, we have trouble balancing our resources from operations and maintenance to planning, so we're very excited to be here tonight.
Alderman Black.
Thank you. And thank you for the wonderful presentation. And Karen's right, very low-key for such a wonderful thing. I guess I'm, and I don't want to go too far down a rabbit hole here, but the public opposition piece, if it's on city property, what kind of public opposition would there be?
I think it's generally going to be a concern, Alderman Black, that there's a potential that we could remove the water in the aquifer system that they're going to be utilizing. And we'll explain to them the difference in depth, the different strata that are between the aquifer we want to tap and where they are. And we'll also case the wells all the way down, so there's no interconnect between the aquifers as we go down. Some of the dots that I showed you earlier tap different aquifers as they go down. Our intent is to strictly go down 1,600 or 1,700 feet and tap one that's well below and not interconnected to anybody else. But I think it's just that perception, that worry.
Sure.
If that's your sole source of water that comes from your private well, what's the city doing to impact you potentially?
To whom would those folks express their opposition to this project? It wouldn't be through us, because we wouldn't represent them if they're not in the city limits.
They'll certainly express it to myself and the people in department.
Sure, well, no doubt about that.
If they hear that-
They'll express it to us even though they are not our constituents.
Right, but I guess-
This is one of these problems, right?
This is one of these problems, right. But that just makes it seem like, you know, if somebody has a farm, you know, I wouldn't represent them, nobody up here would represent them, so to whom would they complain to then stop us if they wanted to do that? I guess that's my bigger question here.
I presume they could complain to the county board. I think, you know, from the Water Department's point of view, we want to make certain we're addressing all concerns. Whether they are able to complain to you or elect you, we want to make certain, we try to alleviate their concerns as best as possible.
Absolutely, no, and I, yes, I know you guys take all those concerns seriously. I just am curious, because I find, this reminds me of the conversation we had about the leases up at the lake, you know, that's who's representing these folks and how are they petitioning us, and it's an issue with that. So I appreciate the information and I look forward to hearing what folks have to say.
Alderman Frue.
You want a motion?
I'd love a motion. Wow, twice?
Can I have a question?
You're asking me if I want a motion, yes.
I would go ahead and make a motion that the staff recommendation be approved.
Is there a second to Alderman Frue's motion? Seconded by Alderwoman Hellman.
Bob, thank you so much, and I guess my only question is, what is it, 30 years ago that we had the drought? Was that in the 80s?
Late 80s, correct, yes.
And ever since then, I guess maybe we've recovered from that, and I don't hear a lot of discussion about running out of water, maybe there's a little bit out there, but I think, I think I hear more about quality than I do quantity. So my question is this, I think the questions that I and maybe some others get is, who's managing this water thing? Is it the city of Bloomington? Is it a regional management? Is it cooperative? You know, we hear all this conversation, so how would you respond to citizens that ask, is this a city of Bloomington initiative? Is this a regional initiative? How do you answer that?
This specific project is the city of Bloomington initiative. There's certainly been conversations on and off over time about a regional water supply plan going out west to Mohammed Aquifer and bringing those back in. Obviously, Normal does their supply from wells and they have some out in that area, but my understanding, there hasn't been any traction from any individual to push that project forward. There are certainly a lot of studies from the Illinois State Water Survey, Mohammed Aquifer Consortium, sorry, Coalition, works through a lot of that to see what the supply is, but there's no, no strong impetus to group at this point that I'm aware of.
Just to clarify, I mean, many of us have talked about it either on the campaign trail or publicly, that that's our perhaps best long-term solution, but in, within, there is no way within the city limits of Bloomington that we can get to the Mohammed Aquifer. So that's why we have, we would have to go to the west as essentially Normal does, is that correct?
It's correct. I included a couple of slides after my questions in case-
Oh, you figured.
So if you look at the purple, that's your Mohammed Aquifer in the area, you're going to see Normal's indicated there because they draw water from that. So you can tell that it's out more in the Danvers area, it's the closest location that gets to us for that, so we'd have to go out several miles with wells spaced and pipelines to bring it back in, and then most likely to a new treatment plant, which is tens and twenties of millions of dollars versus the, we're still talking a lot of money at the lake, obviously, but a smaller fraction. We'll get there at some point, I'm sure, but not in the near future. The other graph, I want to kind of come back to yours if I can. The bottom chart on that, I skipped through this on there, but the bottom chart is actually from that 2010 study. The orange basically shows the average daily with a projection of increasing. Well, in 2010, we're still growing. The blue is kind of a maximum daily amount in that month, and you're going to see they're both increasing. So the plan in 2010 was to plan for that additional growth. One thing, one benefit of, word this correctly, the time we've had since 2010 that we haven't accomplished a lot of infrastructure has given us time to gather more data. So the graph on the top is actually a chart that picks up, if you look, I don't have a pointer, but here we go. Somewhere in here is 2010. You compare that trending downward generally than down here where it's trending upward. The capacity to lakes hasn't changed much since '09 to a bathymetrics, a volume review we did last year, so it hasn't shrunk as much as we anticipated, and our demand has not increased as much as we thought in 2010. So as far as a capacity, that's not necessarily, if you want to order them, I'd say it's a quality and nitrate type of concern before a quantity of water. It's certainly something we need to address, but I think this pushed us from an at-risk for the most severe drought to inadequate. And the most severe, the worst-case drought is you take all the droughts in history, you take the worst length, the worst amount, and you put them together, and how do we fare? And this is, this trending, the natural, some of its natural conservation, some of its outreach, some of its fixtures, has brought that down from where we were thinking we were six years ago. That was a long-winded answer to a question a couple times ago.
Just a quick add-on, we supplied Mitsubishi, didn't we?
Yes, sir.
I thought we didn't. And off the top of your head, how many, how much water in a year's time, or?
They never utilized as much as the system was designed for, not nearly even close. When I started in the Water Department about a year ago, we were about 250,000 gallons a day. It was designed for 5 million gallons a day. So we are working to operate that system a little bit differently, but even they were at that point, when I joined, up until three months ago, are the city's largest client. So it was, it's hurt the revenue for sure.
Alderman Lauer.
Okay. And I don't want to get too deep here, just like Scott. However, I think it, the conversation certainly needs to be expanded. I talked to Craig Cummings at length about this in the past, prior. Certainly, we should be talking with the folks in the conservation and agricultural community about working with us in our watershed to minimize the surface nitrate application process. Agri-technology has come great bounds in even the last decade. They're treating seed now so that it can be applied dry with a surfactant, so that it maintains the nitrate absorption rate even pre-emergence, that's before the plant actually, after it germinates, but before it actually emerges from the ground, and then maintains that through the end of August and even into September throughout the gestation of that plant life, so that we don't have to have the amount of surface application that we've had, especially in the fall in the past. So I'm hoping that as things progress in the future, we're going to see a decline in the nitrate level even in Lake Bloomington because of the conservation efforts from that end. The other side of the coin is, yes, we do have a much, I would think, a much reduced, at least at current capacity, with the loss of our largest customer. And so we're not, we're not really pushing up against that barrier. And it's been brought to my attention that really we should be looking at better uses for what Ben Ward is expelling into Sugar Creek. And there's industrial uses and agricultural uses for that that we could be garnering probably that we're not. And so, you know, there are even wells that exist within the city of Bloomington, they're not potable water, something that we don't suggest people, and a lot of times we even pass an ordinance to disallow anyone from drinking that water. But there are a lot of other uses that our city goes through and our companies go through, even citizens go through, that uses water that doesn't necessarily have to be potable. And so there's, we really need to think about that. One of the areas in Ward 1 that I, comes to mind, it kind of, it's kind of a little thorn in my side, is that we have a, as I understand, a golf course that we're using city water to irrigate, and we really should probably drill a couple of small wells, shallow wells for at least the good times, you know, when we have plenty of water. If we're going to irrigate there, we could be doing that from groundwater. So, and I think that would probably save us money in the long run as well. And so I think there's a lot of areas that we could conserve water and be more careful about what we're doing. My concern here is that we're spending a lot of money for a study that we may not implement for years to come, number one, and number two, it is increasingly very, very expensive. You're talking about treating the water from the aquifer that Chino and Monoc are using, and that, as I understand it, is pretty heavily concentrated with lime and some other, some other things. I know that they've, you've talked about, and this study is obviously going to cover that, but I guess that's my biggest concern. If we could be more conservation-minded about how we're using the water, what we're doing with our watershed, we may not have to go down this road if we garner the technology into the future.
Do you want to respond to that, because we have run out of time, if you could quickly respond?
I'll try to summarize real quickly. As far as, I'd be remiss not to mention our conservation efforts. We have a great rapport with our producers in the area, a great relationship with the Soil and Water Conservation District, the Nature Conservancy, the list goes on and on. We're piloting no-till, we're piloting cover crops, we're piloting drains that go along the streams to filter out the nitrates before it get there, we're installing wetlands. The list goes on and on of the efforts that the water department's doing to address the watersheds and educational opportunities. We're consistently looking for grant opportunities, we have $200,000 in the budget to implement those types of practices. You mentioned timeframe for this project, this is in FY17 budget for construction, so our intent is to have the design done if it's to be done, and to have it, the bids brought to this group before the end of the fiscal year so that we can award that. As far as the reuse, there's certainly opportunities to look for things on that avenue. I know that we're going to bluntly run into a lot of discussion opportunities if we're to tap in to anything that's discharged from the plant and what it does to Sugar Creek and the environment that many people have worked diligently to improve. I think that came forth in a number of previous studies, which I have plenty of copies, and honestly, within the first three weeks of before I got to the water department, three people addressed those concerns with me to make sure that I was aware of what was ahead if we were to go that direction. So that being said, we're aware of those things, we think that's out in the future possibly, but the short term, we have a quality issue at Lake Bloomington, as again, we have been pumping from Lake Evergreen since, I think, December 19th.
Right.
When we got the rains and the fall that pushed it up. So we're hoping to come back to Bloomington and take some water there.
Actually spent time on Lake Bloomington, about four hours just afternoon.
Great.
So, and by the way, our RIP wrap is really working, I'm proud of what we've done there. My biggest concern, I guess, is what this, do you have any cost projections before we go ahead and do this study in terms of what we're looking at into the future in the short term?
The budget amount for this first Phase One A and One B, which includes drilling the wells, is $2 million.
Okay.
Part of the $100,000 that I'm asking the council to approve is to come up with cost estimates to go from that stage until the plant. I would be remiss to tell you anything at this point until we get to that stage.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, at this point, we're way over budget in terms of time. If you'll vote on this, aye is in favor, the motion is presented and made. The motion carries eight to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk, and we go to our last item of the evening, item 8D, consideration of adoption of resolution affirming the city's vision, mission and values. And we're going to start with a brief five-minute presentation by Alderman Howman and then a brief council discussion. Alderman Howman, I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the third time we've discussed this as a group. The work on our proposed mission, vision and values began at our fall retreat in 2015. We did not have time to finish at that time, and I believe that was actually a good thing because it gave us a chance to spend more time, time on it, and include more than aldermen in crafting these. We had two aldermen, several staff and department heads, and two Bloomington 101 graduates all worked to come up with our new mission, vision and values. Well, I believe our mission was probably a valid mission when it was adopted. It really doesn't inspire me, I don't know about other people, but the mission of the city of Bloomington is to be financially responsible, providing quality basic municipal services at the best value. First of all, mission statements are supposed to be nine words or less, just because we should be able to have them right at the tip of our tongue to be able to share them with others and to hold ourselves and others accountable. So our draft mission is to lead, serve and uplift the city of Bloomington. Nine words, including "the city of Bloomington." So we really, if you want to look at it, it's really five words, to lead, serve and uplift. I think the city of Bloomington is kind of assumed there. We did not change the vision to be a jewel of Midwest cities, that we kept the same. And then we took core beliefs and titled them values, and rather than having seven or eight, we brainstormed, we had, I don't know how many flip chart pages of potential values, but again, we wanted to keep it short and simple, and we came up with three, which includes service-minded, or service-centered, results-driven and inclusive. And the idea here is that each department then can discuss what each of those means to their own department or own area of responsibility, and then we can hold each other accountable for them. We decided as a group that the values should not be the values of the council, but should be the values of the city, and that includes the staff, the council and residents as well, that we can hold each other accountable for those. That's my five minutes.
Questions of Alderman Howman, comments? Scott?
Just wanted to thank you for your hard work. I know that we can all sit here and wordsmith this, but I know that it's, I'm very supportive, I think it's great, and I appreciate your leadership on this topic. And with that, I'll make a motion that we approve as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Frueen. Alderman Lauer.
I still question the representation here. I don't understand why we're changing. And quite frankly, you know, the citizens are who we're supposed to be, are companies that work in Bloomington, that employ people in Bloomington, that hire people, that retain people, that retain our citizens, that really are the backbone of our quality of life, have not, for the most part, changed. Yes, we are evolving, but why would we change these missions and the statement from what we had? I don't necessarily agree unless it's citizen-driven, okay? And I'm not sure that that's really what we're doing here. I don't believe that it's really citizen-driven to change our mission or our mission statement. So I am going to go with what my constituents have elected me to do, and I would maintain the course. Thank you.
Have any, to my knowledge, I don't know that there's ever, I've heard of a city where citizens lead an initiative to change a nine-word mission statement.
Maybe that's the problem, sir.
Mayor, the...
Maybe that's the problem.
Isn't it all up to us as elected representatives to say, we are more than a Walmart mission statement? Sounds like to lead, serve, uplift. I mean, I think I agree with all of them. I mean, that's to lead, serve, uplift, rather than...
We're already doing that.
We're going to try to give you, you know, we'll squeeze a couple nickels for you. I don't know.
We did have two folks, we opened it to graduates of Bloomington 101, and we did have two folks join us with that. So Scott, what is our, what is our current mission statement, without looking? Or, I'm sorry, Kevin?
I'm not going to sit here and recite it to you. Don't insult me, thank you.
Okay, I think at this point, Jim, last word, and then maybe we'll just vote.
I'm just going to try to bring something back here. This is really how we apply it, how we live it, how we breathe it, how we, what our intentions are, what our follow-up is.
Okay. Alderman Millman.
So what's the, I think last time I spoke about this, you know, and I very much agree about wordsmithing, you know, you can do that until, you know, the cows come home, is that the expression? Okay. And French? Vous pouvez les faire jusqu'à ce que les vaches reviennent le lendemain?
Okay, never mind.
Now, let's try Japanese. So, yes, I guess the question I have is, you know, what happens from here? Because I think last time we talked about, you know, really developing strategies and goals, right, from this. And so I guess my question is, I'm not sure, are we ready to accept this before we have the whole picture developed?
What do you feel is missing?
No, I'm talking about the strategies and goals. I think we talked about that last time, that that was the next step.
Don't we have that here? Strategic plan, goals? I mean, that's our...
Right, that's what we have currently, but I, are we, I thought those were connected to the old vision and mission that we had. So the way I was, and I don't know, I mean, I wasn't here when this was developed, so...
I guess I wasn't either, so, I mean, I just, it seemed like the goals, financially sound, excuse me, financially sound city, providing quality basic services, upgrade city infrastructure facilities, grow the local economy, strong neighborhoods, great place, livable, sustainable city, prosperous downtown Bloomington. Those are, of course, goals seem consistent with uplifting and moving forward, I think. I don't know, Alderman?
I don't, I don't know that they need to, I think they need to complement each other, and I think they do. And that doesn't mean that our strategic goals can't change.
Right, okay. Then I guess that was a terrifying question to really figure out where we're going with that, you know, if that's what we're going to do, we're going to just kind of mesh the two together, then let's go forth and conquer.
And it did sound better in French. Okay. All right. Because there's so many of the A's, it come out. All right, at this point, an aye vote is in favor, nay vote obviously is opposed to the change in the mission statement. The motion carries seven to one, there's one nay to announce, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Lauer.
Okay, thank you very much, and we're going to move right along to, at this point, acting city manager comments. Brian?
Just wanted to see if I could figure out how to make the, figure work here. I'd just like to thank the city manager Hales and trusting me to stand in for him and giving me the opportunity to learn and grow in my service to the city. Also like to thank the staff members for their preparation and presentations tonight, so.
We have a grand tradition that with your predecessor, Chief Kimberling, Chief Kimberling was the acting city manager, actually during a two-week period where we had a real tight budget issue.
I'm aware of that.
And Mr. Jurgens is laughing, yeah, it's like, our city manager picked a perfect time to turn it over to Mr. Kimberling. Anyway, thank you so much. In terms of my comments of, I just want to thank everybody, we're certainly having a heat wave, and I want to thank our, not just a particular heat wave, you guys had an especially difficult challenge this past weekend on Saturday, so we thank you for all you do and protecting us and our citizens. At that point, at this point, excuse me, I want to turn it over to others, Alderman comments. Alderman Lauer, yes?
Yeah, Brian, a great big thank you from Ward One and South Main Street. Certainly, we couldn't have handled that without you. And I think, you know, I'm sure it's a job well done. I can't tell you the guilt that I felt driving away at 7:30 in the morning headed for work, headed southbound. I didn't really want to leave Bloomington, I felt like I needed to be here, but I can't let my business just go either. So it was a difficult...
Well, I think the firemen were probably happy, you and I didn't come out.
It was a difficult 20-minute drive to the south, and by the way, I could stand in our parking lot and see the smoke. And so, from 23 miles away, I could see what was going on here.
Wow.
And so, anyway, thank you, and I know the crews were out again last night, a couple lightning strikes. These guys do things for us, day in and day out, they go unnoticed, and we need to notice, we need to be noticing. So thanks to both them and the police department, because we had to close one of our main thorough fares for the better part of the day. And so hopefully, I'm hoping that something will rise from the ashes there better than what we had. And I'm hoping that Mr. Bentley will reinvest, and I'm sure he will, he owns a good share of that neighborhood and a lot of the commercial lots along in there. So, anyway, thanks again.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Several.
Moved by Alderman Black, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. All in favor of city, if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.